North Fair Oaks Community Council meeting of Thursday, March 28. We'll start with a message, a message with one of our members who is participating by Zoom. So he will explain how that will work and it now is allowed as long as he explains. So George, whenever you're on.
You guys hear me? Hello?
We can see you.
Can you see me? Can you hear me?
Oh, hold on, you're muted.
Hello?
Can you speak?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Oh, thanks for allowing me to join remotely. I'm actually on the East Coast in Silver Spring, Maryland, right now at my parents' home. I'm going to be here for at least a month, maybe more, I'm not quite sure. I'm here for my parents' health reasons. Anyone needs to reach me, call my cell, 301-275-0397. That's why I'm here.
Thank you, George. We'll go ahead and proceed with roll call then.
Commencing roll call now. Vice Chair George Zaman.
Present.
Councilmember Juan Carlos Prado.
Present.
Councilmember Everado Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Niket Cersei.
Present.
Councilmember Brooks Esser.
Here.
Councilmember Blair Whitney.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly Carisi.
Present.
Councilmember Mariela Geralta. Chair Kathleen Dowling.
Here.
All right, like to welcome all of the people in the back here. Welcome to our meeting. We'll let you know that there is a protocol for public comment. If there are items on the agenda, you do need to wait until that agenda item is up. But for regular public comment, you may speak on any action not on the tonight's agenda, and you have up till two minutes. So if you haven't already done so, please turn in the speaker slip and we'll get started.
We do have a few speaker slips submitted. When I call your name, you may come up to the podium. You will have two minutes to speak. I'd like to call Anna Kramer to the podium for two minutes, followed by Jose Moreno.
Thank you. Can you all hear me? Thank you, thank you, Amanda Chairwoman. I'm Anna Chen Kramer, and I actually used to be the Chairwoman of North Fair Oaks Council in the eighties. So it's like coming home and I can tell you, it wasn't as formal. We didn't have staff like now and it was really casual. So it's very, I'm very happy to see such a great crowd and a formal body to represent North Fair Oaks. I lived nine years in North Fair Oaks on Fair Oaks Avenue. I was part of the grade separation on Fifth Avenue, looked at the design and everything, and part of the circles on Fair Oaks Avenue. There was a big neighborhood, Haha and Apple didn't want to close the streets, and we didn't want them to close the streets, so we had the circles, landscaping. It was really fun part of my life. But I wanted to come here today to introduce myself as the congressional candidate for District 15, which North Fair Oaks is in. So I wanted to know, let you know that I'm hopeful that I can represent you. This is really like home to me. I moved out of the area and then moved back, so I'm in St. Carlos now. But I always have fond memories of North Fair Oaks and all the aspirations, all the friends that I made there. So if I made Chairwoman, I brought some cards, business cards and palm cards, if I can pass it out to people, just so they, if there's any thoughts that you want to hear, please contact me. Thank you.
Chairwoman says yes, sorry. Thank you.
I'd like to call Jose Moreno, followed by Raul Monalma.
Good afternoon. My name is Jose Moreno. I am the owner of 2865 Middlefield Road. I am the owner of the laundromat. Prior to your construction of the Middlefield Road, I had four parking stalls in front of my laundromat. After the final construction, you guys have removed, or Samtrans have removed, four parking stalls in front of my laundromat, which my neighbor left him in a liquor store, or he doesn't have any more parking. Or Gukos, which she's a, believe it, one member, she's the owner of Gukos. She doesn't have no parking stalls. Not only have my four parking stalls been removed, but when people are trying to get the bus, which I'm at in front of my laundromat, they go inside my laundromat, they go to the bathroom, they leave a mess of toilet paper, what have you. So prior to the bus stop, it was on the left. We also are owners of the car wash in front of the laundromat, where Maltonados, you guys put another red zone, which is affecting them as well. So I asked for your help to reconsider that bus stop. I invite you to go and come and look. I really brought down myself tremendously in cells, and I need of your help, please. Please, to reconsider and look, look where we're standing. Thank you for your time.
Please, the council cannot comment, but we hear you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, everybody. My name is Raul Monalma. I own an auto body. Been this 24 years here on Middlefield Road. Before the construction started, we came to the meetings here, and we all voted for this, voted for that, but apparently, I guess you guys had made up your mind already. Nobody noted by us about the bus stop being moved. We had a bus stop in the corner, yeah, but we had four parking spots. Now we got none. I got the auto sales there and the auto body shop there. Now customers for the auto sales cannot stop in the front because of our cars. We're trying to do some business, but we used to try to move on every day. Now we got the bench in front of us, we got homeless people staying there. At daytime sometimes, urinating there, they urinate at night in the vendor spots. You know, we, you know, we clean up every day. It's just kind of hard, you know, because the bus stop, before it was in the corner, there was no bench there. It was fine, people would just move on. Now, it's causing a lot more problems. Like I said, we got no parking. If you can just help us in any way, if you can move the bus stop over to the other corner, and move the other bus stop across the street, because now Mr. Moreno, he ain't got no parking either. We have problems there, you know? So, you know, the homeless has actually got the bus and stayed there all day long. Last week, the ambulance came over there, found the guy there lying on the ground. The week before, a guy was staying there all day long with a little tent there. We had to tell him to move, you know? So if you could please help us in any way, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Last call for public comment. Back to you, Chair.
Okay. Moving on then to agenda item number three. We have Olivia Boo from Planning and Building talking about the consideration of a use permit and off-street parking exception for Plan 2023-00216 at 424 Dumbarton Avenue in North Fair Oaks. So Olivia, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, let me share a screen here. Sorry, I'm not as accustomed to Zoom.
Can you see that yet?
You're good now.
Thank you. Hi, so my name is Olivia Boo. I'm with the Sammetail County Planning Department and wanted to present a use permit that I am processing, and that is before you, being located in the North Fair Oaks area. And it is a use permit for, again, requesting to legalize an existing structure that was converted by a previous owner from commercial space to habitable space. There are two units. I will walk you through the project scope, location, photos and plans, and be in the compliance and be available for questions. The property owner is Mario Rodriguez-Girio. The applicant is Kyle Tran, and the address is 424 Dumbarton Avenue, North Fair Oaks. It is a corner parcel at Crocker Avenue. Again, the use permit is to legalize the conversion of commercial space into two, to a single story, two habitable units that are located in one building, unit A and B, converted without permits. Each unit is approximately 268 square feet. You will see that it is located on the front portion of the parcel. The zoning district is commercial mixed use, number three, and the parcel is 5,000 a square foot, which is the required minimum lot size. So this is a Google map view of the parcel and its location. And these are photos, existing photos. So there's the black gate driveway, and the unit is here in the... Are you able to see my mouse?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is the existing structure that is subject, part of the subject process. And then this is actually an existing commercial use in the back, all under the same owner. Additional photos, again, of the front unit requesting to be legalized. And then the photo on the right is a view from, it's a view from the left side of the property. So the left diagram is a site plan of the existing structures. This is a subject unit, and this shows the parking. So there is one parking space that will be, that is, it's a covered garage space in here. And there is available space for two spaces here. And actually, the owner can do two spaces in the back, and then two additional, one in back of the existing habitable structure, and then one towards the front entrance. And then the units, the drawing to the right is the floor plan of both units. And these are the existing elevations. And you have the front door, is, the front door of each unit is facing Dumbarton Avenue. This chart shows the compliance, so it complies with the minimum lot size, also with the front setback and the rear setback. The side setback on the left side only, which is facing Crocker, actually does not have, it's shy of two feet, where eight feet is included. And the minimum height in this district is 36 feet, and the subject, the project, the building is existing nine foot, three inches. No changes are proposed to the building. I just wanted to bring back, bring to, and to direct you to the parking of, of which is part of this request in addition to legalizing the units. So for project conformity, it does comply with the North Fair Oaks Community Plan, the general plan. In terms of the zoning district of the CMU 3, there is the exception for the left side yard, the height, the off-street parking, because we're, we normally require covered parking, so this is not able to meet that requirement. And then electrical vehicle parking is also part of the requirement and asking for an exception to that. For the use permit, we ask, the regulations ask for that the use is not detrimental or have significant adverse impacts to coastal resources or detrimental to the public welfare. That the horizontal mixed use is compatible with the surrounding uses and will not detract from the character of the street. And the use is necessary due to specific characters, characteristics of the development and the area. They, that the same use in a vertical design would be an unduly cost or burdensome. It would take, it would not, it would take effort if this were to be vertically designed, since the unit is actually already existing. And for the off-street parking exception, the bicycle parking, which is required, it is being located. I will show you again in the photo, so I did not mention that earlier. And the reason for the off-street parking exception is, as I review the project, there is not adequate space to construct a new two-car garage or carport without obstructing adequate, without obstructing access for the other, for the cars to be on the property. Thus, that is not an option in terms of constructing covered parking. For the environmental review, it is considered exempt in terms of, due to the project is considered minor alteration of existing private structure and interior alterations. The recommendation is approval of the use permit and off-street parking exception tied to, associated with legalizing the two-story attached residential units. Allowing the, to uncovered, the uncovered parking spaces as proposed, allowing the minimum building height to be lower than what is required, and then a substandard left side setback that faces Crocker Street, Crocker Avenue. That is the end of my presentation. I do know that the applicant is present, and I believe the owner is also available for, if you have any questions for me that I can help answer.
Olivia, I have a question.
Yes.
Hi, Kelly Carisi here. Thank you for all you do in this very thorough report and PowerPoint. You referenced in this report that if these two studio apartments or structures, however you define them, count as part of our housing element. Are they part of meeting our affordable housing or just our general housing element?
It's for the general. It meets in terms of, because under, well, under the state mandate, that was, has evolved and been fine-tuned specifically over the last about three years with requirements of allowing or requiring the affordable, affordable housing in terms of, because a lot of the, for example, just a lot of the housing, there's not enough housing in the Bay Area. So in terms of that, this is, this is a path to achieve white housing in the area.
Got it, thank you.
Niket?
Just to make sure I understand, this is a unit that already exists. All they're asking for is to go from an unpermitted unit to a permitted unit? And these are the exceptions of why we need to, or why it's being asked for?
Both, so it's, you would need, for in the zoning district, you need a use permit to allow for residential. So that's one part of it. And then also asking for the exceptions of the parking, the covered parking, rather, the height and this, the left side yard setback.
I also noticed in the presentation, there was an exception for EV parking.
Correct.
What was the rationale behind not requiring that, given the push to EVs?
My understanding is there would be, there's also, it's getting a little bit tight on space, but also that I know that it's, it would be difficult on the, on behalf of the owner.
Could you clarify what the difficulties are?
I believe, I think the owner can also elaborate on it, but I think there are also budget constraints.
So I'll start up this whole project.
Do you want to come up to the podium? Yeah, yeah, why don't we do that? Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Hi, Olivia. So this whole project actually started when, believe it or not, I wanted to add a solar system to the warehouse. So I could buy an actual EV car and chart it. I was unaware that the units in the front were illegal conversions. So when I went through the planning department to get my power meter upgraded for the, because I needed to have the power meter upgraded in order for it to work for the solar system. You know, the planning asked me, okay, so what are the two units up in front? What are they? And I said, well, they're two rentals. And they're like, okay, you know, are they commercial? I'm like, no, they're residential. And then the planning person goes, oh, you can't have residential. I'm like, oh, I didn't know. She goes, well, now I've got to report you. I'm like, okay. The only thing I really wanted was to put solar on my building. So then that kind of opened up a can of worms, where I received a letter from, you know, from the county saying, hey, you know, you have, you know, an illegal structure, you know, we're going to red-tag it unless you get a permit to legalize it. So then I contacted my architect and said, okay, we got to agree through the motions. And we went ahead and we applied for the permit. We went through all the stages of every, you know, submitting everything to the building department, to the fire department, to Public Works, to the water department, just basically everybody. Everybody chimed in, and I did, basically every correction they wanted us to do, I did it. I'm a general contractor, by the way, so I have the ability to do some of these things. So I spent about $40,000 renovating those units to get them to meet today's, which they are now. There's air conditioning in them, they have better insulation, they have, you know, one-hour fire protection. You know, they're done, and they're nice. Actually, they're, they're, they're small, but they're actually quite habitable. And I think there's, you know, it is actually affordable housing, because the people that have lived there in the past, some of them were actually under, what do you call it, under affordable housing.
So money?
Yeah, they were, they were being financed by the, by the, you know, by the county. So anyway, long story short, the only thing I'm trying to do is get these things legalized. And then I was planning on putting the solar system back on, but now I've spent so much money just trying to legalize it. Not only that, I have to change my sewer line, which is another $30,000, because there, you know, I have a four-inch line that's coming out of the building, but, you know, technically, if you have two units, you have to have a six-inch line. So now I've got to do that too. So basically, this thing is spiraled for me, trying to be the good guy, to put solar on my building, to like, well, now, you know, here you are, getting punished, we're doing the right thing. So that's where we're at. And so the cost right now to add the EV parking, you know, wouldn't mean that I have to change the panels again. And then, you know, so it's probably another five or $10,000 to do. And what I've spent already and what I'm going to spend more, it's going to put me in around a hundred grand. And, you know, you know, I want to do the right thing, and I like the neighborhood. I've been there for 20 years. You can, you know, if you spoke to all the neighbors that are there, they all know me, they know who we are. You know, we're good people, so, you know, just trying to make it work, trying to do, go through the proper channels, you know, or, you know, canals to make this thing go. And hopefully, you guys can have a little mercy for somebody who cares about the neighborhood too, you know? And it is nice, they're nice units, so hopefully, it'll be okay and we'll just move on. So hope to answer your questions, or I can stand up here if you have any more, I don't mind answering them.
Appreciate the background and the history on why it is where it is. So that definitely clarifies a lot of things for me. Just a quick follow-up. Do you still plan, I mean, not now, but maybe in the future, you're looking at again to put solar when, after you've recovered some of the costs?
Yeah, absolutely. That was the original plan, and, you know, I had a solar guy set up and everything, and then this, this is what happened. You know, I thought I was going to spend $40,000 on the solar system, you know? But now I've already spent that, just renovating, basically.
Well, thank you.
I just want to make a public comment. Thank you for all of these comments. As someone who doesn't have an EV vehicle, but is looking into it and has restrictions in my own neighborhood and house, based on this, I researched all of the EV charging spaces within a two-mile radius to see if it were feasible for me, and it was prolific. And so the great thing about living in the Bay Area is there are so many EV charging stations in so many convenient locations, so.
Yeah, and the other thing is, just so you know, this building, it's a private building with a gate. So even if I had EV parking, it's always going to be for somebody that actually can go in, which would be me or one of the tenants, you know what I mean? So it's not like a public EV charging place that I could, you know, have on the street. You know what I mean? It's not a Costco, you know what I mean? It's different.
That's understood. I think, again, it was for me, it was just understanding the future as people are being pushed into EV vehicles, their housing units will also need to have the EV capabilities.
Right.
For their work, or otherwise it becomes more of an inconvenience.
Right, and, exactly.
For a future, it's a future problem, but yes.
Yeah, and in the future, I could do it, but I'd have to change the beater, you know, to upsize it in order to handle the capacity for that kind of charging, right? You need 70 amps in the minimum.
Done, so, yeah.
Yeah, so those EV Teslas probably know, so, yeah.
Any other comments ever?
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was any feedback from the surrounding neighbors.
No, they, I mean, no. The only person that I know about this is Shinike, who owns the auto shop. Shinike is, I don't know if you're familiar with that, off of Dumbarton. I mean, he's just wondering why I'm having such a hard time, you know? Because I'll tell them what we've been going through, but nobody's mentioned anything.
Right, yeah. I mean, a question for Olivia. Was, was there, were the residents nearby notified about the exception?
Yes. Yeah, the mailing, the required 10-day notification was sent.
Thank you.
Any, yeah.
Well, one more question for Olivia. I don't think I understand the EV parking requirement going forward. I mean, we've, we've approved off-street parking exceptions in the past, and this has never come up. Is this something new, Olivia? And if it is, could you describe it? Could you briefly describe what the requirement is?
It is, let me see if I can bring up the regulations. It is under the zoning district.
So it's, is it a, is it a CMU 3 requirement? Is that, okay, all right, that's, that's fine. That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Any other comment, Blair?
Yeah, I'm just going to say that I'm inclined to support this because we're part of housing. They're existing units, I don't want to take away anything. We have a lot of housing that's built without benefit of a permit, and it's nice when people come forward to do the right thing, because then at least it's sanitary. There's a bathroom, there's appropriate kitchen facilities, as opposed to a backyard shed conversion. So it's a kind of an awkward thing, but it's super close to Middlefield, and I think it's already a zone that in the future, if a developer or anyone else wants to do a multi-story thing, this is that zone. It's like a half-block from the laundromat, the car wash, and all this stuff. And that strip, like a block deep on the left and right of Middlefield is where we've identified we want new housing to go. He's an existing property. He's an existing proprietor, he's trying to pay his bills. I I'm going to support this uh so that it can become legal. Um and yeah, there's a couple of off-street parking things. There's no issue about the. The spacing because if a fire truck needs to pull up or gurney, it's like street, it's super easy for them to support. So I'll make a motion whenever you want it, but uh.
My only comment is thank you for doing the right thing, keeping some affordable housing going. I like the idea of taking, as Blair just said, uh commercial space, bringing some, legalizing the housing. Um I like what you're doing, so thank you. And I'd like to go ahead and open up for motion.
I move to approve the US public comment.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Alright, I'm still learning the protocol. Is there any public comment regarding this?
There's no public.
No public comment? Okay, alright, now, I'd like then to like, someone make a motion.
Recommendation from the uh planning department to approve.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Olivia. Um moving on, item number four. It's an informational item. There's no vote on this, but we're going to take a look at a regional transit connection plan. San Mateo County Transportation Authority, um we've got. I don't know if they're here, Amy? Okay, Amy, Amy Lineham and Patrick Gilster. Oh, sorry, okay. I have herpes.
Welcome.
On the way down here. Good evening, council members. Uh my name is Amy Linehan. I am a government and community affairs officer for the San Mateo County Transportation Authority. I am joined by my colleague Patrick Gilster, Director of Funding and Plan Management. Um we are here to talk to council tonight about our regional transit connections plan. Um we're going to plan and hopefully get some feedback from council. Um a brief agenda that we've put together for you this evening, um introductions, a reprogram overview. Um Patrick's going to go through some existing condition summaries and then he'll turn it back to me. And I will talk to you about the community and stakeholder engagement effort that we have going on associated with this plan. Um and really we're hoping to spend a few moments getting some questions from council. And hopefully get some feedback from you on how this plan is coming together and what your your thoughts are and what we presented so far. Um so, and then we have questions in the round. So I'm going to turn it back to Patrick and he's going to take you through most of his presentation. Little trade.
Thanks, Amy. As Amy mentioned, I'm Patrick Gilster, the Director of Planning and Fund Management with the San Mateo County Transportation Authority. First want to start with, what is the Transportation Authority? Many folks might have heard of us, but not everyone has. Um so we were created in San Mateo County in DTV eight when the original Measure A was passed. Um so it is a half cent sales tax that was approved by the voters of San Mateo County. Um that formed us as an agency. So we're actually an agency under the San Trans umbrella to manage with them. Or by them, but a fully separate agency. Um but we manage sales tax funding that goes to transportation projects of all different sorts all across the county. So we're first and foremost a funding agency. So we provide our funds to the local jurisdictions, including the county, um and all of the cities, um and other different agencies and transit agencies. Um so as you see, we have different programs like the highway program, local streets and roads. We have funding that goes directly to jurisdictions for roadway maintenance. Uh grade separation fundings like uh the Caltrain railroad separations. Um whole host of different transit programs, bicycle pedestrian program. And even transportation to management, so first last mile things, uh like transit subsidies and E bike programs, things like that. Uh but we also help our local agencies apply for and advocate for funding, things like that. And we provide technical assistance to our local agencies. Um to help them lead and implement projects as well when they may not have staff or the certain expertise to help with that as well. So Measure A um produces, was pretty authorized in two thousand and four. Um and has been a refund since then. Um it produces about a hundred million dollars a year, as you can see on the left circle. Um and that's fully managed by the Transportation Authority. Um in two thousand and eighteen, Measure W was passed by the voters of San Mateo County. Um and half of that is managed directly by San Trans, as you can see in the kind of blue side. But the other half is managed by the San Mateo County Transportation Authority, so our team. Um and then kind of on the far right there, um you can see a new category, um have a robin's egg, blue teal color, ten percent Measure W. Um created a new category here in San Mateo County called Regional Transit Connections. Um however, if you compare the two measures side by side, we have almost identical programs except for this one. So we don't have any guidance as much to say, what should the funding be spent on? What are our priorities at the county? Uh what guidelines for eligibility? How are we going to evaluate projects next to each other when they're applied to us? Uh and how we can get that funding out. So we've been giving out all the other funding because we have similar programs that we're able to combine. But now, once we do this plan and figure all that out with community input like we're here tonight for, we can actually give out the money. Some other key things to highlight too, since we don't get to come out very often as the funding agency. Some of the things we're working on around the county as well, we've been highlighting. Um so hopefully you'll hear more from us in the coming years as well as we kick off more of anything. Um we have our one-on-one corridor connects program, which we're um looking at all the different areas in our. North, mid and south county. Uh we're doing individual plans and going out with each of the agencies along the one-on-one corridor to identify what are their local priorities and talking to community members. Um for things like bicycle, pedestrian, transit accessibility, highway improvements, all those different categories we saw at the beginning and the bubbles in which we found. So we can help advance more transportation projects across the county. We're leading a mobility hub and smart corridor plan in San Mateo in partnership with San Trans. Um in the city, um and that's to create a mile and a half bikeway and a new transit hub that will be there. Um to support future express bus and mental services. We're also working on a countywide automated vehicle strategy with um and then. Right now, we're going to be kicking off later this week, actually, um what we're calling active one-on-one. Yeah, sorry, active one-on-ones crossing. And that's going to be looking at lower cost bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements across the entirety of US one-on-one. So instead of our big interchange projects, which you may be familiar with the Transportation Authority for. Um it's going to be looking at smaller things that are going to be able to be implemented faster. Um and then one that's not too far away from here that's uh kicked off recently, that they should be going to the public engagement phase. In a month or so?
Um yes, April twenty first.
So like, you even know the exact date. Uh it's the Atherton El Camino Real Complete Streets Corridor Plan. Uh so that's actually a partnership with Sam Trans, the Transportation Authority, the town of Atherton and Menlo Park. Um and then going to be coming back to this body, I'm sure, to figure out. How El Camino Real can change within the landscape of Atherton to better support mobility for all. Um knowing that it's a county-wide important facility. Um and there's lots of safety needs and big improvements that can happen there. So be on the lookout for that one. But tonight we're here to talk about the regional transit connections plan. Um so as I mentioned, it's ten percent of Measure W. Um it's about nine to twelve million dollars every year that accrues in this fund is what that equates to. Since Measure W was passed in two thousand and eighteen and started to bring funds in two thousand and nineteen, we have over forty million dollars already accrued in that. And so by the time next year we go to host our first, what we call a calls for projects or grant application. We should have over fifty million dollars to give out to the transit agencies for projects. Uh so this fund is for the transit agencies themselves or the applicants. Um but we wanted to make sure that what they're applying for and the funds are going to where our residents and our visitors and our employees want to see the funds best go to. So really, our plan has three distinct parts to it, um three different goals that we're looking at. Um the first to help us establish guidelines for the program applicants. So um people who are actually going to apply for the bond, so create the program applications, evaluation criteria, all the necessary materials they need to. Um actually get the funding. Um and then the second part is to provide information on what is the current regional travel needs for people here in San Mateo County. And what are the unmet needs? So how can we best promote putting our funding that serves the unmet needs in the county? And the last part, we're working with the transit agencies to assess then, what's the full range of funding that this may be needed for to get all these projects built? And figure out how this fund can help leverage other things like state and federal funding to bring more back for our buck here in San Mateo County. So where did this fund come from? Um so when get us moving San Mateo with path of the Measure W effort in our last strategic plan. It was identified that there are seven hundred thousand trips that start here in San Mateo County. That go externally to one of our three surrounding counties. And so it's a fairly large number of trips um that could have the potential to um convert to transit trips. Uh so the hope with this fund itself is that we're looking to encourage drivers who are traveling regionally, though across county boundaries. Um to be able to choose transit and have a better experience using it. Excellent. So what do we mean by the regional transit system itself? Um so as I mentioned, it's things that cross county barriers and it's really the rails, ferry and express bus services. That get you in those longer distances. Um so the unique thing about this fund compared to some of our other funds is it can support operational services. Um so running a bus itself, for instance, as opposed to just a capital project, which is just like a street improvement project. So, you know, both things can be funded from here. But that can include anything from rider experience and station access improvements, so that's. Signage how you get to and from stations and things like better crosswalks to get you to a station. Or it can be things like building a new ferry terminal out at the Redmond City Port and buying vessels for that. Um or enhanced express bus services, like things like the East Palo Alto Express or the Foster City Express, building on those kind of services. Next slide. So we kicked this off in the later part of last year, um then doing an existing conditions report to understand. Where are the travel patterns occurring? And I'll talk a little bit about those next few slides. And then working with the transit agencies to understand what have they already identified. Um and then we're going to compare that to our community and stakeholder engagement process. Amy and I are going all over the county, making sure we hear from folks that are using our transportation systems to see. What they need to see to be able to convert to transit or take one trip by transit, things like that. Um so we're out here talking to folks through the end of April. Um and the grant, take all that feedback and create a capital improvement program. So we're going to compare what the transit agencies tell us, what the public tells us, identify any unmet needs with that to say. What are other projects that we should be helping encourage with our. And then come September, we're hoping to wrap all of this up, create all those program guidelines, the framework for this effort. Um and then adopt the plan itself. Um and all of that will be reintegrated into our larger TA strategic plan. Um and then next year, we're hoping to have the first grant call for projects to release that funding. Go quickly over some existing conditions findings. But the main first thing was laying out what is the existing regional network. Um so it's things like the Alameda Hunter Cops, the Transit District, the EC Transit Buses that run all across Dumbarton. It's the bar system, Caltrain, the what is ferry, the San Trans Express Buses. And some of the SFMTA buses that cross into Daly City in the north. The one thing you won't see on here is the VTA, so for the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority, they don't actually have services that cross north to the border. Um but they are part of our working group because they could have services that do in um in the future. But we trust that some of the same trans buses do cross out into Palo Alto. So both of those agencies are involved. So we validated some of the pre-pandemic trips and looked at post-pandemic travel to make sure that. Are the conditions still the same and are the same number of trips going in the same direction as we originally thought? Um so in an average day in San Mateo County, there are about three million trips that start here in the county. Of that, almost seventy-seven percent ends here in San Mateo County, so stay within the county. So large number of trips that don't actually need to travel regionally. But there's still a lot of folks that do need to travel regionally. So uh twelve percent go north to San Francisco in a given day. All the left half, about seven and a half go to Santa Clara and a little bit go to Alameda in the east. And that's just trips that start here on a given day. So that doesn't include any trips that may start in those other counties incoming here. But this fund is really meant to serve the people that are living and working here in San Mateo County. Next slide. Big thing about the um COVID nineteen pandemic that I'm sure is not shocking to anyone, is that public transit usage went down a lot. People then converted to working from home at those opportunities, but that didn't cover everyone. Um and though even while we saw a drop in public transit uses, we know that the San Trans ridership, at least locally here. Has almost rebounded to pre-pandemic levels as well. So we're hoping that the regional systems will hopefully follow in those travel patterns as well. The services like bar and Caltrain have not recovered in anything fashion. So we're hoping things like this fund can help draw some writers back to that as well. So we'll quickly go through these slides, but these are slides taking a look at where the trips are traveling between San Mateo County and those three adjacent counties. But when we looked at Alameda County, a lot of the trips are coming directly across the Dumbarton Bridge, um into many of the areas surrounding here. Um there's also a lot of trips centered in the north part of the county in the kind of Oyster Point, SFO, um Ilbury area. Trips going to Alameda County, um really are centered in the Oakland kind of area and then all along the Leandro. Um Hayward Fremont, um parts of the bay as well. And then some of those go out to kind of the pleasantries of the. Trips going to San Francisco are generally um going to the downtown Zoma Tech and financial kind of district. Um with some trips going across the border right north of Daly City as well. When trips are coming south to San Mateo County, they generally stay in the northern part of the county from San Francisco. Um which we thought was an interesting travel pattern, that lets folks that come all the way to the southern part of the county from San Francisco. Next slide. And then we took a look at trips between Santa Clara County and San Mateo County. Here's going to Santa Clara County tended to stay in the northern part of that county. Um really traveling to the Palo Alto, Stanford, kind of sunny vale portions of the county. But trips coming to San Mateo County were spread out in a lot greater areas along the southern part of the county. Um or jumped kind of all the way up to the South San Francisco kind of area. Next slide. The other thing that we're looking at as part of this, and interested in feedback on this part as well, is really what supports regional transit. Um it's not just the services themselves, but sometimes how you get to the services. So that includes anything like micro mobility, which is the bicycle or scooter sharing. Um so the wheels expansion, the MTC program, um that may expand south from San Francisco into San Mateo County. Whether we have bike lockers or do that same bike access at major regional stations. Um and personally supporting more programs like the spin. Um bike share program that Burlingame and Milbury are doing, that's actually funded by a different TA program. Uh we've also been talking to a lot of the private employers in the county to understand. With how their employees are traveling, but also to the ones that have their own shuttle system and are using the regional express lane network as well. Next slide. There is a larger nine Bay Area County MTC Transit twenty fifty plus efforts that we're comparing our results to and working with MTC on. Um that already did some gap, regional gap analysis um at the larger scale for post-pandemic rider recovery. Um but for this this project, it really had some few key takeaways for us that we wanted to take a look at with regional access. Um it highlighted a need for gaps that needed to be addressed. Uh for peak and non-peak periods, so the commute times and off-peak non-commute times. And so there were gaps in that both north-south travel and east-west across both major bridges that access the county. That'll pass it back to Amy.
So far down here. Thank you, Patrick. Um I'm gonna just talk to you for a few seconds about our community and stakeholder engagement effort. Um one of the things, I don't I don't think people necessarily associate the TA with stakeholder engagement. That's mostly a Sam Trans, Caltrain expertise, um but we are turning that on Ted. Um Patrick talked about a lot of projects in the beginning of his presentation. Every single one of those has a community and stakeholder engagement effort associated with it. Um you can't really do effective planning unless you're talking to your stakeholders. And you're talking to the community about how they want a project to look and how they want a plan to be formed. So that is what we were doing. We want to make sure that we talk to our stakeholders. And members of the community about what they want to see, the RTC plan look like and what they want the program to get like. Um our community engagement and stakeholder engagement is virtual and it's in person. Um we will be hosting a virtual community meeting on April third. Um the goal here is to really talk to people about how they're traveling regionally. Um are they using transit? If they're not using transit, what can be done to make the transit, the regional transit network improve to? to encourage them to get out of their car and maybe take a ferry or maybe take the train or maybe take the express bus to get to work or to get to school or to wherever they need to go? So the goal here is to talk to people about what the gaps in the system are currently so that we can develop a program to maybe fulfill those gaps. So as I mentioned, we're having a virtual community meeting. It's multilingual on April 3rd. Well, you'll also see us at a variety of pop-up events throughout the county over the next month. I believe we have one scheduled in Redwood City, and that's where we pop up a tent. And we talk to people about what they think the needs are in terms of the regional transit network. And we've also done a unique thing with this outreach. We've had some small group meetings, labor facilitated meetings, community-based organization meetings, some small group meetings with the larger employers in the county. It really allows us to talk to about five or 10 people and really kind of get into the weeds with them on how they're traveling and what they see the gaps are. It's designed for people who aren't necessarily inclined to speak out during a public meeting or a community meeting, or maybe can't participate in the survey for one reason or another. This is really sort of a focused conversation dedicated to those demographics and that group of people. Our main feedback loop is a multilingual online survey that we posted at the beginning of this month. And similar to this present, well, it leads people through a variety of questions about how they're traveling, what they're using transit for. If they're not using transit, why? And what they think the priority should be for a regional transit network? That survey closes at the end of April, and we're hoping to get a good response on that survey to really make sure that the grant program and the RTC program reflects the feedback that we got from the community. We also have social media posts. And then for all of our projects, we launch a project webpage dedicated to that project. All of the information that is on this slide here, the link to the online survey, the link to the community meeting, the schedule for our pop-ups, that's all posted on that webpage. And we update it as we schedule new pop-ups. That's kind of a calendar influx as we add new events to the schedule. And I think that is my one and only slide. Really what I wanted to do at the council's discretion is, first of all, answer any questions you might have about the information that we provided and hopefully get some of your feedback on how you, what you think should be prioritized in this plan. And there's some prompts on the next slide, I believe. Don't feel like you have to answer all of these questions. They're just things to think about, feedback that we're hoping to get tonight. I have the link today on the chart. I don't know how you want to run the queue.
You can go ahead and just start.
So the prompts, the questions that we'd like feedback on. Did we miss anything? What did we miss in the existing conditions analysis? Are there any travel trends that you know of as your position on the council that we have not included? Which county do you think should be prioritized for improving travel connections to San Mateo County? And these are just some examples of prompts. This isn't necessarily everything. And then in terms of who you represent and where you sit, how can regional transit connections be improved in San Mateo County? Is it more direct routes and fewer transfers? Is it shorter wait times? Is it transit speed and reliability improvements? Better links between transit, bike share, and other mobility options? More rider education initiatives or something that isn't on this list or something that you think we haven't even thought of that we should be incorporating?
Okay, Niket, start it.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Good information. One question before I get to the feedback to clarify. Your agency is more like an aggregator. You take a bunch of ideas and then you go and work with all the other transit agencies on how to implement this overarching plan? Or is it something more specific than that?
So we're first of all, most of funding agencies. So we kind of think of it like carrot and the stick. So we can encourage folks like Samtrans or Caltrain to do certain projects because we have funding available to help them do it. So this plan itself is designed to help us figure out with our funding, what kind of different things? Is it safety projects? Is it access to regional transit? Is it speeding up service, those kind of things that we can say, oh, we'll give you more points in evaluating projects to do these kinds of projects?
So you propose to the agencies that, based on the feedback that you receive from us, from the community, things like that, you propose, say, these are the projects we think you should be putting onto your project lists.
Most of them have project lists already. So we have a working group with all the transit agencies that we're getting all their projects. And so we're going to see how the public feedback compares to those projects and then work with them to see if there's not a project identified that doesn't meet a certain need. That's one thing either we might be able to help an agency with or in terms of the funding, or that one of the agencies might want to create a new project with over the next few years. So the length of this is about a 10-year period until we probably update it again. So hopefully in that 10-year time period, they'd be able to at least think about having an opportunity to address some of those needs as well.
All right, so on to my feedback questions or comments. I regularly take the Caltrain from Redwood City up to San Francisco for work. So I see a lot of that. One thing that I've noticed, and this may be just a factor of being a commute time, but it's really targeted for single-user riders. It's not really designed for like, if I want to take my son to work and figure out how to manage all of that. Like, the whole plan is designed for me to get to there and get to work back. But if I wanted to have family outing up to San Francisco, I'm like, it's just too complicated. I'm just going to drive. It's a lot easier that way. So something along those lines, especially like on weekends, the schedules are just ridiculous trying to do it. And I've never found it cost-effective or time-effective to take the train up that way, which is kind of sad. I'd love to be able to do that. And then the second comment I had was, a lot of the transit is all focused along the 101 side of the area. If you're down near 280 or on the other side of Alcamino, or even at Alcamino, it's kind of a pain to get up to any of the connection points. And so I do notice that, at least again, my experience has been if you're somewhere close to 280, you just don't even think about regional transit. You just stop in the car and go. So two comments that I had.
Brooks?
Thank you, Amy and Patrick, for your presentation. I'm Brooks Esser, and full disclosure, I'm also a member of the Samtrans Board of Directors. Okay, so you can see where this is going. We have an issue in North Fair Oaks where our community is basically bisected by the Caltrain tracks. And a study was performed by the county wrapped up just recently to kind of try to figure this out. They looked at great separations. They looked at, you know, overpasses over the train tracks. None of them were really practical. And in fact, this came up in a meeting that we had with Supervisor Slocum just last, within the last week. One of his ideas was perhaps a shuttle service that could run different ways around the northern part of the community. Southern part, we've got Fifth Avenue. It's in pretty good shape, but we could really use kind of help getting people across the tracks in the northern part of the community, whether it's like a scheduled shuttle service or like a ride plus on-demand sort of thing that we've been trying in East Palo Alto and over and a half. I noticed that the funding that's available could be used for operations. Is that the sort of thing that might warrant a response in RFP for next year?
So the San Mateo County, I think we have a shuttle program actually too. Though Measure A has a dedicated shuttle fund for our transit program there. So we can fund operations for shuttles already. So we fund a lot of the commune.org shuttles. They're probably what most people hear about, but there are community shuttles that we also fund. So South San Francisco, for instance, has two of them that operate around there. And then the park has some nearby as well that are all funded through San Mateo County Transportation. Or existing funding, I should say. Until the Measure A funding goes away with the dedicated category, we probably wouldn't use this fund for it. But it is important for us to note down in this fund that should Measure A, for some reason, not get reauthorized in 2033, that we wouldn't want the shuttles to go away. And that this would be a good fund for them to fit under by then.
So if we were interested in a service like that for North Fair Oaks, it would be Measure A funding to cover it.
We also have an alternative congestion relief transportation demand management program. And in that, we can fund this planning studies to actually look at things like shuttle feasibility and where should they go, how much is it going to cost? What should the routes look like? That'll come out in June if there's interest in applying for something like that first. Because you'll need all that information and what does the signage look like, all that stuff, before we can do the shuttle or anything else.
So that sounds like a next step for us to recommend that we go after a feasibility study. And you're saying applications for that begin in June.
Yes, and we have contact that have an example of what that shuttle feasibility study could look like.
That's great, thank you.
Happy to talk to anyone that stands with us.
Thank you.
Okay, Kelly, we have a follow-up. Thank you, Brooks. That was exactly Slocum, Supervisor Slocum was here last week. And I was thinking that, and I, in looking at this, and I know this is for the regional piece, but in North Fair Oaks specifically, we have both a macro and a micro transportation issue. And you really can't improve the macro regional one until you fix the micro. And I think there's like a both and because some of the transportation options, even to get to existing regional transports from some of the North Fair Oaks, I'm not even talking Middlefield, which I do think a shuttle needs to go down Middlefield. You, since I joined this board in November, at every meeting, somebody has talked about Middlefield, losing parking, threat to businesses. So I think it would be a great a both and. But it also is like most, I would be curious what your pop-up events said, Amy? And I know you're going to do them. And I think we should talk to some of our community folks here to get, make sure their voices are here. But I don't know where their workers are. But parking here for workers is a problem that eats spots. And if we could shuttle those folks to a parking lot or to their place of business and get, free up some of the very few spaces left over and also take them to other places they need to go in further out and not on the main quarters of North Fair Oaks seems really ideal. So I love the idea, Brooks, of a feasibility study. I would just want to maybe contract it a little bit to think of the workers who come here and where our residents and members need to get to, both for essential goods like a laundromat or car repair or to visit the public library, which is right here, or to visit one of the many establishments on the street for shopping and other regional transport.
Ever?
Yeah, a couple of questions and some suggestions. My first question is, how much can TA affect infrastructure?
With this fund in particular, it can go towards operating costs or infrastructure costs. And what we're going to be trying to figure out after hearing all the feedback is, particularly how much should be set aside for both of those? So in that way, we'll have to kind of, it's hard to evaluate a bus operating versus a capital infrastructure. So we can then compare apples to apples with that. So part of what we're hearing is everyone saying, no, it's all operating. We don't need improvements on things like the Dunbarport order to get across to the East Bay or something like that. Then we're going to focus on making sure there's more money that goes to the operating costs or vice versa, things like that. But the TA in general, we have a lot of money in the highway program, lots of the ones that go to the local streets and roads, bike and pedestrian program that are for a lot of the capital infrastructure projects for the cities or the counties themselves.
Yeah, and mainly my question is because it feels like regionally, at least within San Mateo County, there's a lot of untapped opportunities for opening up routes for transportation. Like, you know, Niket was mentioning that the farther you go closer to 280, you start thinking about public transportation. But, you know, we also have the Alameda de las Pulgas, which runs a pretty good chunk of San Mateo County. And of course, Middlefield Road, but also El Camino Real. I mean, it just goes across the whole county. And yet, it feels like many times taking public transportation, even in El Camino Real, where it's, you know, like the main public transportation now. There, the waiting time is still not very helpful. And public transportation is still not cost-effective when you compare it to driving your own car. And so, but going back to El Camino Real, you know, if there was like an electric train, a fast train that would go, you know, up and down very periodically. And, you know, I mean, just to give you an example, in Mexico City, light rail, you know, usually it's just like a five-minute wait. It's not a 20-minute, you know, a 25, a half an hour minute. And so that makes it extremely effective for people because you know that, even if you miss, you know, 3:00, 3:05, you take the next one. It's all, it works. And it is also very cost-effective. Now, my other question was specifically in communities like North Fair Oaks where a lot of residents are actually users, heavy users of public transportation. What kind of outreach are you doing?
So in terms of transit rider outreach?
Yeah, I guess in terms of, for example, you know, promoting your service.
So, I mean, I could, so everybody who gets a present, thank you. I'm done here. Everybody who gets a presentation from us gives a link to the survey and the ability to blast out all of the information regarding the outreach, the community meeting, the link to the website, the link to the survey. We have an email blast list that is about 1,000 people deep that we emailed the information to, including, you know, anyone on our stakeholder advisory group, our technical advisory group. I've sent a lot of emails about this, about the survey, about the project. Again, we have this, we have a project website that is robust, that we update regularly with information. The social media is, you know, one of our, one of our main drivers of a lot of information. So we have a social media team dedicated to making sure that we're continually pushing information out about how to access the community meeting, how to access the survey. We are going to be having some Facebook ads that promote the survey, that promote the community meeting, to drive people more to take the survey and talk to us about this. So there is a robust effort to make sure that people know that this is going on and there's an opportunity to collect this feedback.
We've also had a specific meeting with Supervisor Slocum about this project itself and asked his staff to put it in his newsletter that goes out as well. So hoping to reach people specifically in this area of the county as well through that.
And then one last suggestion is to really start looking into bicycle routes. You may or may not know, but here in North Fair Oaks, we don't have bicycle routes. I mean, the very first one is going to be here on Middlefield Road now with the redesign. But for example, from Migo to Stampa, the bike routes, you know, they're segmented in some portions. It's not very well-connected, so it doesn't feel to say. So I think making a greater effort also at providing bicycle connections to transportation hubs or to employment, large employers. I think that would also help a lot. Yeah, but thank you for calling this one, Chris.
Thank you for the feedback, appreciate it.
Sure.
I got a couple wish lists items. I'd like to be able to go to the coast without driving. If there is a way to, I'd probably, it'd be billions of dollars, I'm sure, but to have a tunnel on the train. I've probably, it, it'd be billions of dollars, I'm sure, but to have a tunnel on the train and uh, you know, that'd be awesome.
Tunnel's the first I heard, Gondola or?
Gondola.
Gondola, well, yeah, whatever. Um, I, I also don't want to totally give up on the Dumbarton. Rail bridge crossing. I feel like if we keep a trickle of money going toward engineering that maybe works with. You know, some good engineers, Army Corps of Engineers or whoever, that that could be a future quarter. Or either heavy rail, medium rail, light rail, or several different modes. Uh, because the base, I think, is just gonna increase the population. I don't think we're gonna decrease. And then I want to bring up something about equity. You know, those employed buses, those are for like the software engineers and the, the marketing types and all the. You know, direct employees, all the contract workers, they, they gotta get to work on their own, you know, the custodians, the cooks. Um, and I happen to be a contract worker and, you know, you're kind of a second class citizen. You can park in the lot, but at the very back and you, you, you don't get to set your hours, you don't get to commute from home and do all this other stuff. Um, we have a lot of folks here that are contract workers. Um, and whether it's biking or transit or they just need to drive because they gotta drop the kid at school and do this. Um, I just wanna make sure that they're not forgotten because the, the high profile. Big employers, they get a lot of attention, but um, the people that really need it are kind of forgotten. Um, I bike to work at least the spring, summer and part of the fall. At least two or three days a week, I go from North Oaks to Palo Alto. I take El Camino until I get to Palo Alto, then you get behind the soccer fields and have this great trail of parallels and train tracks. And I'm like, why can't we have that in San Mateo County? It's safe, it's comfortable and it's, it's heavily used by walkers and kids going to school, bicycle commuters. Um, if I wanna go anywhere regionally, I gotta get to Menlo Park or Redwood City. Um, to get to the Caltrain and Atherton closes down their train station. Why can't we just, you know, get an easement and have a. Trainside corridor, um, rather than trying to force everything into El Camino. I, I, I. I will ride El Camino because I don't care. I just gotta get there. Um, but it is dicey some mornings. People are not, it. Doesn't feel safe all the time. And when you get around to improvement, that stretch in Atherton, it is pitch black at night. It comes after sunset. At least get some lighting on that, that corridor. There are people on bikes and walking that are trying to get to the next bus stop or the next train stop. That's like a dead zone. Kind of buy attention because they, they're like, you know, literally you don't belong and they don't want you. Anyway, um, I rambled. That's all I got.
I do wanna address, if you don't mind, your equity question because while we did talk to Google and we did talk to Stanford. And we did talk to Genentech, we also hosted a small group meeting that was facilitated by the labor union. San Mateo County Labor Union where we talked to union workers to get their feedback about. What improvements they wanted to see to the transit system. So we heard a lot of stories about. What quite frankly sounded like ghastly commutes. Um, and to see what, how we could make this program work for them as well. So we're not just talking to the Googles and the Stanfords and we are doing that, but we are making sure that we get. To the people who are also work for those agencies, work for those entities.
All the ironically off peak times and off the standard kind of. Like seven to nine commute periods are really important for those folks as well that often they have to be there before or after those general. Office hour time. So making sure we have transit services that can support those too.
Uh, Niket?
So uh, yeah, Ever and Blair both uh, talked a lot about what I was gonna mention in terms of, you know, bicycles, things like that. So. Uh, I was excited to hear a little bit about the El Camino and kind of that one, uh, and to Blair's point. I would love for the future planning to think about ways to separate the vehicle traffic from the pedestrian or bicycle traffic. Give them, get that space because again, it's a nice corridor to move. It's easy to go through, but. You're not gonna wanna go unless you're in a car. Um, and then the other one is, I know you're talking more about inner county transit, but. Um, one of the other issues for North Fair Oaks is getting to the various schools. So. In North Oaks, if the, if you can get to Menlo Atherton, super easy, very safe, very nice. Love it. You can let your kid go whatever you want. Going from North Oaks to Sequoia or someplace like that, you're crossing Middlefield, El Camino, downtown railroad tracks. And it's a complete mess. Um, and so getting some sort of uh, pedestrian or. School friendly uh, options for kids to be able to go on their own, have a little bit more uh, safety along those routes. Um, as they cross some of these major intersections and commute areas, so.
Yeah, I, following up with what Niket said, I think just on a super local level, I don't, I don't have to commute in a car, so I don't have to worry, but. I do think in North Fair Oaks especially between like Fifth and what would be. Up to Hoover School, we're super condensed in here and um, there are schools, there's Hoover, there's Fair Oaks. North Fair Oaks, there's the Naps, Garfield. And so when you start to see the um. A pickup, drop off and pickup times, um, there's no way. Me personally would ever try to ride a bike down Fair Oaks with the commuters or the people dropping their kids off. And I'm wondering if there isn't some way to look at what is going on with. Not necessarily the public schools, but even some of the charter smaller schools. If you had a shuttle service that. You know, brought the kids to a certain area where there would be more parking for parents to pick kids up. And I know it's like a really small problem, but when I think of North Fair Oaks, we are just so. You know, there's just, there isn't room for a, a safe bicycle to go up and down, back and forth to the city. So, yeah, you do rely on Middlefield. And El Camino, but when some of these other side streets get super congested. Um, at drop off and pickup times and, and so I think it stops kids from walking. I think it stopped kids from riding bikes because, you know, it's just safer for the parents to pick the kids up. Um, I know um, uh, from past, um, I've often heard from people that commute that it's that last mile. That is the problem. Um, I, a bunch of people, Willow Road, Dumbarton Bridge, you know, they could get across the bridge. But then that last mile where their, the, the office parks were, like in Fremont. Was disaster trying to get to those places. So these sort of smaller shuttles. Um, yeah, opening up some stuff for that. And I'm also a big believer in. Please fix the Dumbarton rail project. Like, let's get everybody in the same room. It's a perfect opportunity for light rail, a bike, a bike path, a walking trail, something other than. And empty railroad tracks, so. So those are my comments. Any others from anyone else? Um, one other, um, are you on next door with?
Yes, you are.
Okay, and do we hit the North Fair Oaks then?
Um, I will have to follow up and make sure that.
Okay, because there is, there is one, okay, okay, good. Then, um, thank, grateful for your presentation.
I just wanna say great work and we hear a lot of these presentations about how they're engaging the community and this is really lovely. It really seems like you're trying to like turn under rocks to find folks. So I would encourage you to find. You, you were here at the beginning of the meeting, these voices really matter and, and thank you for. Uh, finding them and I encourage you to find more of them.
Okay, we will continue to do so. Thank you very much. Appreciate your, thank you for your great feedback.
Um, okay, I think to finish up, we're just gonna take a look at um, item. Number five and um, we sort of touched on this last week. Um, in our study session and it's just something that's been on my mind for as long as I've been on the council, which is um. Which is to dig a little deeper into what we're passionate about in regards to North Fair Oaks. And try to split up a little bit in some committees so that we could um. Focus in, like what, what, what is it that you care mostly about and would you be like to sit on a committee? Um, so we don't have any brown act issues and you could like tackle, look deep into. What an issue might be and report back on the things that you care most about. And so some ideas um. Including safe streets, community cleanup, community events, housing, uh, the rezoning. You know, what's gonna happen to our community when all these things start to come to play and. I think it all matters to us. So I think it's, how would you like to break up into committees? We can just take ideas tonight and, you know, we can put it on the agenda for next week, but. I know personally, I know, you know, we can't tackle all of them, but if somebody could report in. On things that we care about that would help us be able to tackle all of them. So. That was kind of my um, reasoning for saying, yes, I would chair. So now it's up to you guys to help us figure out what those committees should look like. And then also remember that they can only be as many as four, Tim, is that correct?
Yes.
Four, okay, so there can't be any more than four on one committee. And um, I've opened it up for just ideas at this point and go from there.
Kathleen, thank you for this. I love this. So great. Um, I sent you some of mine. My only add-on comment should be, I am sure. And I both put trees. It's like our interests, um, in no particular order. I think there should be like who's chairing it and who's supporting it. So I will unofficially officially.
Sure.
Voluntold you to chair the trees committee because you have so much more knowledge. By the way, I met with that arborist that you recommended, who's awesome. Thank you. Um, I, I would like to be on the committee, but I think Niket should chair it and. Then put me somewhere else where I'm leading something else. Where other people are interested, but I just wanted us all to think about what do we care so passionately about that we wanted to be. The lead on that committee and what we wanted to be a participant on.
Okay, and actually Brooks brought up a, a good point and possibly the trees should be its own. Entity rather than trees, green space.
I think I put that in one, on the uh, survey that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Specifically trees.
Okay, I apologize. I've not looked at the survey results yet, so um.
I was talking with Tim the other day.
Perfect.
Trees actually are really interesting reason why we have a lot of laws that we have. That's why it's definitely its own subject on a whole different area.
All right, Niket, trees, chair, all right.
I'll call the Lorax committee.
Uh, Brooks?
Um, like I mentioned to you in my email, splitting trees apart, leaving parks and open spaces, stuff I'd love to leave.
Okay, parks and open space, okay.
I don't have enough jobs where I have multi-jurisdictional stuff going on.
Well, you get the complication and I will.
I was also gonna mention that, um. So the, the, the very topical transportation, um. And I think the. The groups that we already belong to, for example, Niket, you know, it's already. Over, you know, trees, that, that's kind of a natural um, area to be. Involved in, uh, you know, the um, eh, I guess, um. Having the ad hoc uh, group for that. Um, eh, in my case, I've been working with community preparedness. Um, eh, for disasters and emergencies. So, you know, that would be a natural area for me. I've also been working on environmental justice issues. Um, eh, which to some respect may tip in a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Be, but not necessarily, you know.
There's definitely a lot of synergy.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so um, you know, um, those two are. My um, current activities, I'd be happy to, you know, report on that.
Okay.
Uh, there's a chair, George has his hand up.
George, yeah.
No, I just wanted to add, I sent it in the email, but uh, I'm. Very much interested in being on the rezoning, redevelopment and land use as well as housing. And if there's time, by all means, Small Business Alliance.
I'd love to be on that committee too. I wouldn't chair it. I don't.
Chair one?
No.
You have to chair one.
A ball, chair something else, but I, George knows way more, but that was one of my three too as well.
You wanna be on that committee then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
George, you're chairing.
I've long told you.
Rezoning and redevelopment.
Works for me.
Okay, chair, George. And then um, do you guys wanna think about it? Um, because we're gonna need to do more than one. Okay, Mon Carlos, anything you'd like to chair?
Mentioned uh, community events.
Sorry, yes.
I can.
Community events, okay.
And through the, through the chair, um, I was gonna comment that, for example, the expertise, I think is also. Valuable, um, to regard and, uh, for example, Juan Carlos in education, you know, would have a. A better idea, um, if there's something coming up related to sporting or drugs or something. He probably has a better experience than me or um, Blair. Who's done this a certain work in, you know, in that area. And um, similarly, I think uh, Brooks, he just mentioned that he's uh, part of the. Um, sometimes, um, eh, board. So I think, you know, transportation is kind of also falling naturally on his lap. Uh, whether he was, you know, um, eh, he had that, uh, that's another thing, but, you know. He's, he's already involved. I'm sure he learns a lot about, you know. Different things, uh, transportation related, something that some of us don't.
Brooks, step up to head.
Could I head parks and be involved in transportation, something like that?
All right.
I've also got kind of an interest in the Small Business Alliance too.
Okay.
Benefits that we can accrue through something.
She's not here tonight, but I think I would like.
I've long told her.
Okay, yeah, Ariella, really.
A hundred percent.
Yeah, is key to that one.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, um. Yeah, sure.
If that also includes maybe a small business development, community association. And, and just kind of uh, building or bringing up or protecting companies for consideration.
Yeah, I would agree. I think um, somebody keeps asking me, where's the money for that? So I haven't figured that one out yet, but yeah, it, in to formalize it makes a lot of sense. Um, Blair, you um, seem to be following a lot of the redevelopment and rezoning, knowing that that was a CMU project. Can uh, we get you on that one?
Really interested in a new library and more housing.
Did you hear about last week?
Oh, yeah, I watched that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um.
So I, I happen to be on a committee and lead a committee?
No, I'm just volunteering you if you're interested.
Uh, can I decline? Cause I'm. I decline.
Of course, yeah, okay, all right.
Kathleen, put me where you want to chair something, knowing that I think I'm better as like a second or third. I'm enthusiastic, but still learning the ropes.
Okay, so I think what I'll do is, um, we kind of have a blueprint. I'll take a look at what the um, results were from the survey. And report back at our next meeting if that's clear to everyone. Okay. Um, I don't have anything else or any other comments regarding that? Any public comment on us forming committees? No?
I have still questions just for um, purposes of verification. So the ad hoc committee essentially. Eh, we will just be reporting on some of these issues that are related, is that correct?
Reporting and I hope, hopefully following.
Okay.
Having a better idea that some things that we don't wait to, a meeting to find out, like jumping ahead. Of what's going on as much as we can, as much as we're allowed to.
And in order to fully qualify as an ad hoc advisory subcommittee, it's important to all. And in order to fully qualify as an ad hoc advisory subcommittee, it's important also that the first time that your group meets, that you set a timeframe for making some kind of report and then officially disband upon making that report. If you get reconstituted, that'd be fine if there's more work to do. It's just that you can't be the standing committee on land use because then you would become something other than an ad hoc advisory subcommittee. So I can help you navigate that process when it comes up. Just plan on having a deliverable by a, a timeframe of less than a year and bring a report back to the NFCC and everything you have.
Okay.
On that note, for these committees, do we have to have the, or like posting the meeting notes? Is it, we can meet on Zoom theoretically or just, okay?
Is there any document that would outline what you just said that we should have access to?
I can, I can send you some bullet points.
Okay.
Chair them around. It's not complicated. It's just, it's a series of things you're not supposed to do as opposed to things that you should do instead. So.
Okay.
Um, and you're already doing it.
Okay.
It's when the committee itself established, sorry, when, when the council itself establishes a committee, it can't establish a standing committee and you're definitely working within the rules to make sure that you're right. So I, but I'll send you some bullet points that help to summarize the, the, um, the hallmarks.
So if we could come up perhaps with a charter for the committees, what, what we're going to investigate, what the timeline is, that kind of thing.
A perfect topic for your first meeting. Okay.
Any other comments, questions, suggestions? All right. Does anyone like to make a motion to adjourn a little early?
Can we do report out?
Oh, shoot. They're in that protocol. Do we have any report outs tonight?
Um. Or put it on the list.
Starting with um, the county executives. Anything to report from the county executive's office? Okay, Connie, you're from Supervisor Slocum. Okay, all righty. Uh, council member reports. Blair, you think you'll report?
Um, I really enjoyed watching the video of last week's study session. I was out prepping for a topic, so I was just about to say, but, um, I really liked the report from the supervisor and all positive messaging. Um, and one of the supervisory candidates asked me about stuff. I sent him the video of like, hey, this is a good thing to see what the council's talking about and what the ad hoc supervisor's talking about. Um, that's all it was.
Um, Juan Carlos?
No.
Okay. Um, Ever?
Uh, no.
Um, Niket?
Uh, so I was hoping we were going to meet with Supervisor Slocum about the tree ordinances, but scheduling is really troublesome, especially with spring break. So they'll probably be meeting sometime between now and our next meeting. So hopefully we'll have a, a better update on the tree ordinances. Um, and similarly, we're meeting with Canopy tomorrow to kind of understand what we can do for tree, North Roads region. But kind of the plan is for that as well. So hopefully people report on the trees.
Okay.
Yeah, those are the people sixteen, right? Yeah.
Okay, George, anything to report out?
Nothing major, not at this time.
Kelly?
Just building on what Niket said, um, I had to put it on your radar there. Many people in North Fair Oaks may have be hearing PG&E and the county doing some tree trimming. It's pretty alarming what's happening and we'll talk about it, I have to talk to you after, but, um, about something new. But, um, let's just say, um, there's a lot of liberties and not following guidelines on arborists, I had an arborist out, um, rules on how they trim things and, um, it's putting basically the arborist said it, this is a delayed disaster that they've just done at the county. And so anyways, I just want to put that on your radar. Um.
Was there something specific that?
Um, yeah.
Tell me, okay.
Yeah, I'll talk to you about it, but it's, it's more about these two entities have, um, ability to do a lot of things, but they're supposed to follow contracting standards for cutting and that's not happening and it is, it's basically a delayed disaster creating new problems. So anyways.
Our ad hoc committee started.
Yeah.
Brooks?
Um, yeah, actually I followed up with, um, April Chan, who's the CEO of Sam Transit in response to the Aldenado presentation at, uh, at our last meeting. They were here again. I, the owner Matt's here tonight. I want to get that contact information for the owner and I will send April another note. I actually copied the supervisor on it. Encouraging, urge reached out to Adam and hear out what's going on here. Is this county issue, is Sam Transit issue, can the thing be done? But I think we need to get back to these people. The issue's not going away. They're passionate about it.
Mm-hmm.
It's hurting their business and it's a little frustrating to keep hearing this speech. And I go to all the meetings where these people speak, but it's a little frustrating to, uh, to hear this once again. So I'd reach out to April and we'll get the owner of the laudanum involved as well.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, I don't think we want to. I think that has to get resolved some in a favorable form. So, thank you.
Sorry?
We have a meeting already scheduled with Sam Trac and Pat.
Okay. When is that?
Uh, I think it's going to be.
Can we left Aldenados and the Laudanum people? Okay, thank you. I, I saw him leaving and, you know, we can talk to him during the meeting through. Thank you so much.
Hey, um, I think we can, uh, take a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Did you have anything to report out?
No. Great job. All right, second?
Second.
Uh, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.